Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. On this fifth day of September 2017, we have all seven Planning Commissioners in attendance for a full quorum, and we hope you feel welcome and invited and at ease this evening through the proceedings and as you might want to offer your comments on the agenda items. The first thing on our agenda today is our consent calendar, which consists of approving the minutes from August 15, 2017, if a Planning Commissioner has any action here she would like to take. Commissioner Hatch?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
A second now.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Hatch and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero, which brings us to our first public hearing. Mega Motres LLC continued from our August 15 meeting. 8945 South, 1300 West, a conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales in a CG zone. Mega Motres LLC. Abden Garcia is the applicant. Is he present this evening? Please come forward, sir, and present your application.
Yes, thank you.
I am just here to help him translate.
Great, thank you. Could you offer your name for the public record, too, please?
My name is Yorani Valiente.
Thank you.
So, the business is a car dealership or car sales. Before, it used to be like a body shop. Yeah, before, it used to be like a mechanic, but now it's just car sales dealership. That's about it.
Thank you. Is there anything else that you'd like to add about the application?
Do you have any questions for him?
Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, we will save some time for you if anything comes up in the public comment section that you might want to respond to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And for the city, Mr. McCandless has this application?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, the applicant's requesting a conditional use permit for a motor vehicle sales and service business. It's located at an existing site that's at 8945 South, 1300 West. It's pretty straightforward. This is the site. The applicant is going to, is looking at occupying just a small portion of the building here. The rest of this is a landscaping business, you can see by the vehicles that are lined up. They'll only have two employees on the site. Area that's, would be designated for the sales or the display would be just here along the frontage. As you can see, there's only room for two or three cars, but they do line them up or use some creative maneuverability to get the cars in so that they front onto, onto 1300 West. We really don't see that there's going to be an issue with it, given that the previous use was an auto body shop with some, with quite a bit of noise from the compressors. With this, they'll be using minor detailing just to get the cars ready for sales, but nothing, nothing too involved. And the two employees that are, that are at the, the business will be doing that work. So, there's four spaces. Parking spaces required, but there's plenty of parking that's, that's on the side. What we would recommend as a condition of approval is that they do stripe that parking that's in there so that we can tell, you know, how many, where those cars are parked. As I mentioned in the pre-meeting, we did receive just a concern from the adjoining neighbor to the, to the north. The concerns weren't too, very specific. It's just, they didn't want that use in that, in that building, but we see it as a less invasive use than, or less intensive use than, than an auto body shop. So with that, a recommendation would be for, for approval subject to the conditions that are listed on page two of your staff reports.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. McCandless? Commissioner Green?
Do we need to add a condi, I'm just looking at the, the display area. Right now, the one that's highlighted in the aerial photos got about eight cars parked in that.
Right.
Do we, does that need to be striped? Do we need to designate the number of cars that can be parked in there?
I don't think so. It's pretty self-limiting. There's a fence along there, just as long as it doesn't extend past that driveway or encroach into that driveway, I think we're fine.
I guess my question is, as part of the conditional use, um, do we need to, do we need to designate that as the, as the display area, or is that in part of the, is I?
Oh, I see. So you're wondering if it was, if it was to be used as parking rather than display?
Well, what I'm, what I'm more concerned of is, we pack the display area and then we go around to where the parking needs to be striped and we add more cars to display.
Oh.
That's, that's my concern.
Oh, sure. You could, you could state something to the effect that the display area is limited to the area that's out along the frontage of 13th, or something like that.
That was, that was my question. We, we don't have that as a condition now, but we could add that if we wanted to say that's the display area.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. McCandless? Well, seeing this was noticed as a public hearing, we'd like to open that up to anyone in attendance who would like to speak on this particular item. Seeing none, we'll close the public comments and bring it back to the Commission for deliberation leading to a possible motion. Commissioner Green?
I think that's the only, my question to Mr. McCandless, I think that's the only thing that I'd like to see in that is limit the display area to the area along 1300 West if, if we want to add that, but other than that, I'm good with this.
Thank you. Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wonder though, being that this is a very small car lot, I wonder, how many cars are we going to need to provide parking for, is my question. I mean, let's assume that business is going well and they want to add a few more cars that wouldn't necessarily be in the display area, but that would be in that striped parking. I'm just wondering if we're not unintentionally hurting a, a business by limiting only eight cars, whether, where we could potentially, maybe, maybe the condition would be that we earmark five stalls for customer parking, and that would allow them to grow without having to come back in front of us again. I, I can't see that there would be really a need for more than five parking stalls for a, a small company like that that's, that's only selling, you know, a, a small amount of vehicles.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there a reason we're only striping the bottom section and not the north section as well?
Yes, because there are overhead doors and accesses to the building on the north side. There's a little bit of parking there, but I'd prefer to see it on that south side because it's basically just a blank wall.
Okay.
Well, good point. If it's a display area only and it's not parking for potential customers, I can, I can see a differentiation between striped parking for people who are coming in as a normal patron would, needing clearance to open doors, but car lots, you know, car dealerships, they quite often pack them in tight. I, I can see the difference there.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm wondering about handicap parking. Is it provided?
None of that, none of that has been provided. That's why we're requiring the stalls to be striped, and it would include a handicap space as part of that. That'll be handled through the?
Because the size they're showing really isn't the size of a handicap parking stall, so I wondered about that.
It'd be easy to add.
Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If nobody has anything else to add, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit for Mega Motres located at 8945 South, 13th West in the CG zone, subject to the conditions one, two, and three listed in the staff report, and with an additional condition, a fourth condition, that, that five of the striped parking stalls be reserved for customers, and the rest of the parking stalls, along with the display area out front, can be used for cars to be sold.
Commissioner Quinney?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sikoski and a second by Commissioner Quinney. Discussion of the motion, please. Commissioner Luthy?
Sorry, I have one more question. We talked about that other building being owned by somebody else. If we're talking about now taking all of this parking for them, is any of this parking reserved for that other building?
Good question.
Because I'd hate to restrict that building from having its right to be able to park what it needs to park as well, making this all parking just for the one.
Mr. McCandless?
As I mentioned, this, the other part of this is being used by a landscaper, and so adequate parking would have to be provided for them as well.
So it's a shared use parking?
It is.
So then I don't know that we can designate that much to just the one. I think you're just going to have to leave it, general parking is one, the display area only allowed to display their cars there, and the two will have to find out who gets to use what on the parking. I don't think you can call it out. I don't think that that's fair to both tenants.
And with those five parking stalls, would that be inclusive of one handicap? Because what is the ratio of regular stall to handicap parking for ADA compliance?
Oh, for this site, it would only likely require one stall for something small.
Great. Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you. I guess my concern is, and maybe we revise the motion to say that the general parking can be used for display as long as it doesn't interfere with the landscaper. My concern is that if we limit, if we just limit them to the display area only, and we say that cars to be sold can only be in that display area, then that doesn't allow for the applicant to really work out with the landscaper available spots, because he's only limited to that. So, I don't want to, I don't want to handcuff him. It'd be nice, in a sense, to leave it to where it can be worked out with the landscaper.
Commissioner Luthy?
I agree. I agree. I'm just wondering if the only reason that was a deterrent to be able to park cars along the north edge was that there were overhead doors. That doesn't mean that he couldn't park them in front of his own overhead doors and give him more space to park cars, right? There's nothing saying he can't do that, is that correct?
Well, we wouldn't count that towards parking. The other thing is that they can park additional cars inside the building, you know, if they needed to.
But it wouldn't be counted, but there's nothing saying he couldn't put more display cars in front of his building. Okay.
Great. So we, would you like to revise your motion, Commissioner Sikoski?
Yeah, let's revise it to say that, well, let's just take that fourth, that fourth condition off then, because that would allow him to work out with the landscaper if they want to do that. So we'll just omit that fourth condition and keep it as it is in the staff packet.
Without any additional provision or necessity of striping parking stalls?
Correct.
Right. Does it mean nothing, nothing additional?
Correct.
Great. So we have a revised motion by Commissioner Sikoski, striking the addition of the fourth condition of approval, and Commissioner Quinney was the second. Do you accept that amendment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Great, thank you. Any discussion to the amended motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to one with Commissioner Green casting the dissenting vote. Item number three on the agenda this evening is community dental services, the Dental Lodge, 3755 West, 7800 South, preliminary site plan in a POZC zone. The Dental Lodge, Santiago M. Gardos? Did I say that even close? Sorry. You, you can come up and correct me. I apologize. You, you must be the applicant, sir. Please, come forward.
We're just, we're just so happy we came back from vacation, you know, a couple days ago, late fall. So.
Could you please angle the microphone up just so that everyone can hear, please? Thank you.
So we are building a 3,300 square feet, a new building in West Jordan, you know, 78 South. We have like 24 parking stalls. Like I said before, this is going to be a new building. We believe this is going to be an improve for the, for the city, like a win-win opportunity. Currently, there is an old house there that we, we are planning to turn down and have this new, you know, beautiful new, new building for dental services, for, you know, working with the community. This is my wife, Lindsay. She's been working with us, you know, for the last two years, trying to make this, this dream, you know, a reality. What else? Anything else you want to?
Do we want to go through the, all the charts?
I'm just so passionate, you know, about 93 and having this new building.
This is a site plan, and you'll see the required parking stalls along the west side and the south side of the building there. We actually have over, we have, I think, 24 parking stalls.
The city only requires 20, 22, I believe, but we, we just want to have, you know, a little more. Those are the elevations. Very good-looking building. Don't get me wrong, but it's, it looks good.
So the, this siding will be more like a hardybacker with the stone on the lower
Next slide, please.
This is the landscape plan. You'll see a, a grassy area in the front there and stone or rock along the east side of the building. Trees spread about.
All right.
The sign and then the garbage enclosure. And that east border wall, we're actually going to recommend changing that to a stamped concrete, working with our contractor. It might be a little less, less of a cost. We're, we're self-funded, so we're a little bit of a budget.
Oh, this is going to look good, yeah.
All right. Great. Anything else?
I think that's it from us.
Any questions for the applicant at this point? Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you. So, if we look at the overhead, it looks like the, the property in the lower portion of that aisle has, are those driveways on the back of that, that property there?
So the, the back parcel is actually, we're, we're doing an easement. It's the same owner as the kind of the flag-shaped property just to the west.
Uh-huh.
And that back parcel just north of the park. So we have a shared easement drafted up.
Okay.
Waiting for your approval to go forward and?
Sure, I understand.
Jason property.
So my, my question for you is, assuming that that property that's to the south eventually develops out, because that's also PO zone.
Exactly.
The easement that's there would open up and allow for access to that property, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's already set up that way, so we won't have to change anything.
Awesome. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. Are you going to be the only person that's offering dental services, or will you have other dental services offered by different dentists? Are you going to be the only one there?
So I'm going to be the only one, and later, I'm going to be the only one, but later we're going to add hygienist one and hygienist two.
But no other dental organist or?
Eventually, but, you know, these first five years, we probably, we don't, we won't, but there's still room, you know, to, to accommodate another dentist in the future.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else for the applicants at this time? Well, we'll save some time for you after the public comment section if there's anything else you'd like to address. Thank you. Mr. Forsyth, you have this for the city?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So, the applicant's done a great job in explaining the basics of their project, so I'm just going to go over the details, but, like they said, they've, they're proposing a new dental office at this location just across the street from Jordan Landing, so, so again, as they've kind of explained, that they'll have frontage along 7800 South with one driveway access, just coming off that'll run north to south along that west side of the property, and that driveway will also spill over to most of the stem portion of that flag-shaped parcel to the west there. So the parking lots, they'll be to the sides and the rear of the building. They'll have about, as the applicant said, about 23 to 24 spaces, which is right at that threshold for the required parking. So in looking at some of the surrounding area, you've got residential subdivision just to the east there, vacant parcel to the south, and a single-family home to the west. And then to the north, of course, is the commercial area of Jordan Landing. So the property is located in a PO zone, which is professional office zone, and that zone actually has certain zoning conditions attached to it that were put in place when that was rezoned in 2006. So what those requirements entail is, they require an eight-foot masonry wall and a 20-foot landscaping buffer along the side adjacent to any residential and different zone. And then the other zoning condition was that it limits building height to 35 feet, which the maximum building height in that zone is 30 feet, so. So looking at the site design, it's kind of hard to see here, but that building setback is actually 40 feet from the property line. Now that's to account, not only for the minimum 30-foot setback, but also a 10-foot strip along that frontage that's going to be acquired by the city within the next five years in order to turn the shoulder along the south side of 7800 South into another travel lane and to add a new sidewalk and a new park strip. So and then the building height, that'll be 24 feet, measured from the grade to the peak, with a stone chimney that will just extend four feet above that, so they'll still be within that 30-foot setback required by code. So again, as the applicant's kind of explained, they'll be implementing a more traditional lodge-style type of a design, and this will work particularly well with some of the existing offices that are already along that section.
I want the updates now. I'd say eight o'clock.
Well, it'll have to wait, I'm afraid. Anyway, but going back to the design, the DRC's already looked at this and they felt pretty good about it and didn't have any comments, and therefore recommended a positive recommendation to the Planning Commission. Now, in looking at the east side, city code requires that they have any wall that's 50 feet long or greater, they need to incorporate a stone column to break up that wall. So what they've done is included two stone columns here to meet that requirement. So the landscaping, again, they've kind of already gone over that, but that's going to include a mix of turf and some zere-scaping with most of the trees along that east side. So a minimum of 10 trees are required as part of the landscape buffer requirement. So they, they're showing a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees there. And going back to the east border, along that property line, they'll have a, an eight-foot masonry wall, just as they've explained, using that, the new materials. And then the south property line, there's, there's no boundary wall required there, so they're just going to put in a, just a six-foot vinyl fence as per their preference. So based on these findings and those explained in the staff report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission grant approval of the preliminary site plan for the Dental Lodge located at 3755 West, 7800 South, with the conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Forsyth. Question for you, please. I'm glad that you covered the vinyl fence at the end. That was just going to be what I would bring up, because I know that although it's in the same zoning district and it's not necessarily mandated to have a masonry wall, I know we're trying to get away from certainly chain link, but we've also said, when possible, vinyl. And piggybacking on that question, because it would be bordering that landlocked vacant parcel to the south, what would the city envision highest and best use? What would be coming into that vacant, landlocked parcel? And do we want to put a vinyl fence back there? Can you speak to both those items? Yeah, do we need a?
Yes. So, just going back to the landscaping plan, there, so between the parking lot and that fence is just kind of a landscaped area, so this would essentially just mark where the border of their property is. So we really don't anticipate a parking lot just going all the way through and across that property line anytime in the future, but in terms of highest and best use, that vacant parcel's located in a PO zone, same zone, so most likely we'd be looking at some sort of an office similar to this or some sort of a similar use there. It would probably, most likely be a smaller building with particularly taking those 20-foot landscaping buffers into account, but at least, well, that and the parking lot requirement, so it'd probably be a, a pretty small building, but, yeah, like I said, we'd be looking at an office use there.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
As I've looked at this, and, and I'm going to tell you, I don't disagree with having businesses on an arterial road, getting homes off of an arterial road, which has been a discussion of this commission for a while. The question that I have, and, and Mr. Nelson, maybe you can help address this as well, so can maybe Commissioner Luthy. How do we feel about having a mid-block ingress egress onto 7800 South right there? And, and if we talk about future expansion going east and west, how is that mid-block, ingress egress going to affect this? Since I'm not an engineer and don't play one on TV and didn't pay at Holiday Express last night.
That's a very busy road. It's got a lot of congestion, so mid-block ingress egress work best when they're right in, right out. It's when you have traffic that cross through the median that you create a conflict point. Our traffic engineer is, is looking at that. We've got, I think, so, yeah, there, there's a median there, but we're looking at relocating one of the medias. medians that's, that's gotten opening to a different location slightly. Uh, that's something that the traffic engineer and the city council are currently considering. But, yeah, whenever time you, you know, and in a road that's got that much congestion, it affects the flow of traffic and creates a conflict point and potential accidents.
Commissioner Quinney?
Thank you. I just wanted to go back really quick to the fence. At the end, um, Chairman kind of tagged on, do we need to put a fence in there? The applicant was talking about a budget, and it just seems unnecessary to have them put a fence on that south, that south barrier?
Yeah, it's not required by code. It's just something that they've decided to do.
Is that something you guys were wanting to do then, or?
So, so they have the option to put it in.
This just seems unnecessary to me. I don't, I didn't know if they were requiring it or not.
Uh, no, the city's not requiring it.
Thank you.
Probably more of a safety, privacy issue. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you. Um, going back to that, uh, image of the ingress egress, um, my question is if we eventually, because, because as we've discussed many times in this commission, the goal is to get, uh, businesses along arterial routes, um, eventually it would be nice to see this whole border become businesses. Um, I guess, I'm wondering if that ingress that's currently there would be substantial enough to allow for future use, um, of all of the businesses along that. If that all became business, would that ingress egress be enough to allow for traffic for all of that, or would that not support it? I know that came out kind of garbled, but I hope you got what I meant.
Yeah, it's, it's probably the only one we would allow. It could, it could be modified, slightly widened or, you know, that kind of a thing, but, uh, we definitely try to minimize those and have minimum spacing requirements, and I couldn't see another one being permitted within that stretch.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, and then my other, uh, comment kind of goes along with the same as, uh, Commissioner Quinney with that fence. Um, my question is, assuming that eventually that, that, uh, south lot does develop out as a professional office, would it be possible, um, to have that fence removed? Uh, because I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to block or screen that business from, from the road, uh, and potentially limit that business.
I should clarify one thing. So that fence will only run to where it intersects with that future driveway, so it's not gonna run the full length of that?
Right, but it still would, I mean, assuming that they put the, the business on the east side of that parcel, it still could screen. Right.
Yeah, and we'll, wha- what we'll need to do is, we, we thank you for the additional clarification. We'll bring you back up because people are gonna be listening to this and we need to type it up, so, thank you. We appreciate that clarification. We'll, we'll have you explain that again in just a moment. So, Mr. Forsyth, if I understand correctly, you're saying that the vinyl fence won't run the length of that vacant lot, but then that still wouldn't be a barrier for privacy. People could just walk around it?
Right, so that, it would only run from the southeast corner to, uh, where that landscape section ends.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify there. Appreciate that. Commissioner Sikoski?
That's all I had. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for staff? Thanks for answering our questions. Well, this was noticed as a public hearing as well, so if you would like to speak on this item, please feel free to come forward. You'll have up to three minutes to express your opinions. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section, and since you had some additional clarification, would the applicant, would both of you please come back up and mention what you were just saying? This way we can get it on the record. Yes, and could you please mention your full name again? I know your husband mentioned it once, but just so that we can get it typed up.
My name's Lindsay Delisle.
Thank you. Could you please clarify what you were saying about the south vinyl fence?
So the south, well, the south vinyl fence is just temporary until that business actually, or that, that land is, um, developed. And then the owner of that parcel actually has an easement to 3800 West through that apartment complex there. So that could be another question. That could be actually eventually an egress.
Well, great, thank you. And we, you know, wanting to be citizen-friendly, that we're citizens of the community too here, just trying to help out and, uh, make sure that the mandates of the city are being addressed, but also being, uh, citizen-friendly. You mentioned that that vinyl fence would be a buffer for keeping tra- foot traffic out or activity, whatever's going on back there, but seeing as how it's not going to run all the way to adjacent walls, is that something that you would like to put in? Because it's not mandated by the city and vinyl fences aren't cheap. That is what you would like, though?
So, they currently have a trucking company running out of there, so just to kind of...
Okay.
But, yeah, so just to protect some of the traffic probably going in and out, but we still wanna have, we still wanna give him an easement right, and that's really his only option to give him out of there, so I think that's, that's one for now. Unless anyone has any...
Okay. No, you're prerogative, just trying to flush out all ideas here and be on your side as much as the city's side and have it be a win-win, as you mentioned. Thank you. Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you. I just wanted to, to say thank you for, uh, clarifying that and, and giving us all the information. Um, and also just thank you for wanting to do business in West Jordan.
Commissioner Green? Oh, sorry. First, we have Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. Um, the concern I have is if we don't put a fence along there, they're running a trucking company out of there, which I don't know is allowed in that zone. But what if that property isn't maintained? If that property isn't maintained, it doesn't help their business if they've got this vacant lot that is not being maintained, that is full of weeds, full of whatever. And like he, she said, people there doing things maybe they shouldn't be doing. So that gives them protection for their own business and for their customers. So I feel quite strongly that a fence, vinyl, not, certainly not a, a, um, stucco or, or that type of fence, you know, the decorative type, but the vinyl would be, give them more protection, um, due to what is being used on that lot and due to the fact that, um, if it is not kept up, it becomes quite a nice one.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
That was my first question, is if this is, if there's a non-conforming business on this property, do we have an obligation to, to, to send code enforcement over there to do anything with it?
Certainly you could refer that to code enforcement to have them look into it, but it shouldn't have anything to do with whether or not you approve this application, obviously.
Okay. And, and then my... I lost my train, and then I lost my, I d- I derailed my chain of thought, train of thought, asking...
We can come back to you.
Oh, I, I know what it, this is, since this, since we have a, we can add conditions to this property, I'll ask you, um, as part of preliminary development plan, we could make a condition of approval that, that, that we're, we're okay with the vinyl fence here, but that for consistency's sake, on the development of that, on the development of the property to the south, um, in a P O zone, we could, can we put a condition on there that that fence come down at some point in time? You see where I'm going with that?
And become a masonry wall, is what I mean, or just come down totally?
So we make a cohesive, so we make a cohesive thing there, can, can that be...
I think under, I think under state law, you need to limit your conditions to something that will mitigate a perceived problem. I don't think the, uh, I would not feel comfortable in, in making any kind of condition on fencing between the same zone. Now, if it's residential property, I'd say absolutely, you could increase the height or whatever you wanted because there, there, there could be a deleterious effect from the one, but I think the same, I, I just wouldn't feel comfortable with adding a...
I just want the fence to come down at some point in time, so we have a cohesive...
I, I understand what you're saying is more of a design thing and maybe, uh, as the applicants have said, they would work with whoever, but, you know...
Yeah, we just need to be careful that it's not an illegal exaction where we're requiring something more, as Larry mentioned, uh, than we otherwise would be able to.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy?
I think that we've discussed this enough, and I think that we're in good agreement that this is a great fit. Mid-block, this is a great mid-block, right in, right out. The people that are willing to go here are knowing that they're gonna have to do a right in, right out, and I don't foresee that that's gonna be a problem. So, I'd like to make a motion. Okay, based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that the planning commission approved the preliminary site plan for the dental lodge located at 3755 West 7800 South in the P O Z C zone with the conditions of approval listed on pages seven and eight of the staff report.
Thank you. Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Luthy and a second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion in the motion? Seeing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Keep smiling, keep other people smiling, good lick with all the teeth. And thank you, as Commissioner Sikoski said, for doing business in West Jordan. That brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is Discount Tire, 5513 West 7800 South, preliminary site plan and a conditional use permit for vehicle and equipment repair, limited in a P C zone. Hallie Properties LLC, Scott Fournier is the applicant. Is he present this evening? Thank you, sir. Tell us what you'd like us to know about Discount Tire. Uh, one moment, please. Something, is there, okay, now, now we've got it recording. Could, could you say that one more time and tell us your name again, please?
My name is George Byes. I'm a civil engineer on this, uh, site for Discount Tire. Scott Fournier is unavailable for this meeting tonight, and he's asked me to represent Discount Tire for the meeting, so. I think we've worked very closely with, uh, your planning staff and the, uh, uh, development committee and made, we've made some adjustments to the site plan to match the adjoining, uh, development, Del Taco, which is immediately to the west across this, the central roadway. Uh, they've also made some adjustments to the south elevation of the building to add some vertical elements as requested by the planning staff, and if I can answer any questions for you, please let me know.
Any questions for the applicant or his representative? If we still don't like the tires, can we bring them back and throw it through the window like the old commercial?
That's Grandma's tire.
Oh, that's Grandma's. That's not Discount? So we really would be in trouble, wouldn't we? Dang it. That, that was my favorite commercial from the seventies, so, right.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Oh, Commissioner Sikoski has a question for you, sir.
Yes. All right, um, so if we go to the overhead drawing of the site plan, um, we had kind of discussed a little bit in our pre-meeting, um, the, uh, so, well, let me step back a little bit. The whole parcel along here, we've been asking, um, the developers and the people that have moved in to make sure that the, the site is walkable. And one thing that we noticed is right along the north, uh, side of the building there, where the sidewalk is, um, there's, there's a landscape barrier behind the building, but there's no pedestrian traffic pathway to walk through into the adjacent, uh, property lot. And we're wondering, um, and, and maybe you're not the right person to ask for this, but we're wondering, uh, what it would be, or if it would be possible to continue a pedestrian pathway into the adjacent lot.
To the west or to the south? Where are you?
Uh, to the east.
Oh, I don't think that'd be an issue. Would they just extend that walkway on the north side of the building and just take it to the property line? I think that'd be an easy...
Right, and I agree. I just, um, the reason that I bring it up is I was at Big O Tires, I'm sorry, um, the other day, across from Macy's getting an alignment done, and, uh, I was noticing people crashing through the bushes trying to get to Subway. And, uh, you know, just in the, trying to make things a little bit easier for people to get around, um, I just wondered if that would be something that was amenable.
I certainly don't see that that would be an issue.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Luthy?
I think that there's a couple places on this that that could be very beneficial to have a little bit more of a sidewalk. The discussion that was had is, I realize that this isn't a roadway connecting 78th to Ranch's Loop, but it looks like a roadway. I realize it's a driveway, but it's got buffers of landscape on either side. I mean, it acts like a roadway, and there, I am positive people are going to use this road from 7800 to turn on to Ranch's Loop, and anybody to get this walkable community, anybody walking through there, there's nowhere for them to walk. They can walk in the road, they can walk in the parking lot, but there's not a designated, here's your place to walk. So in the pre-meeting we had discussed, where, where can we look at this and find ways that would get people between the other parcels as well as between the roadways that are going to allow a little bit more of a safety factor in this walkable P C zone?
Uh, was there a sidewalk required on the other side of the street at all?
Hmm.
There was, but I don't know exactly where it was required.
Sorry, I turned off my mic. There is, but I don't remember exactly where it was required. We had this previous discussion, again, when Del Taco was going through, for the same requirement, that we'd like to see connectivity between them as a portion of being in a P C zone, that it is a very walkable friendly zone, um, but I don't, I don't remember where that left off.
Mr. McCandless, do you remember? I know it's adjacent to it. I don't think it's straight across, right?
No, if I recall, it was just along the east side of the Del Taco side from here to here. Down through there. This will be developed in the future.
Yeah, so if there was even a way that like, maybe the island right there in between became a walkable transport between that, do you see the middle island between the stalls? Maybe you connect it right through there to the, so that now there's a connection. Now they have a connectivity. Now there's a directed path of how people can get from one side to another. They've got it along that side. You can connect over. Now we're a walkable community.
I don't think that'd be a huge issue. Uh, I don't think they would wanna do it unilaterally, you know, be the only location there that they were requiring sidewalks, but...
This has been a discussion we've had with several people as they come through here, that we want this to be something that goes between everybody. And one of the comments that was made on the Del Taco was, we can't require them to put in a sidewalk to the site that they don't own adjacent, but if we have your portion that now connects, you've got a way to connect to Ranch's Loop, and you've got a way to connect across, now all of a sudden, it's connected between everybody.
Great, thank you. Yes, definitely. It's not profiling one parcel or property owner. It's trying to make it walkable and connected. If we have disjointed properties piecemeal, then it doesn't add some cohesion and walkability. Hopefully this way, yeah, people will be able to, as we talked about, be able to patronize different establishments. Let's say they're waiting to get tires while they go to Del Taco or vice versa, and it just makes it more pedestrian-friendly for the community. So thank you for, uh, being amenable to that. Any other question? Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you. Um, and I don't think that it necessarily needs to be like a whole concrete sidewalk that goes all the way through, um, where we were talking about that center median there. You could just put concrete in that center median as a walkway and put... Right, so there's visual access for customers to see that they can walk that way. Um, and if we do that on both sides, then, you know, if it becomes a problem, it's really easy to paint stripes on the road as a crosswalk. Um, so we're not, I, we're not asking for a full-on sidewalk, but just make it so it has a place for people to walk. Right. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Luthy?
Honestly, I'd be just as happy if you just put a crosswalk. I mean, if it doesn't even have the concrete there. I mean, the concrete would need to be in the, the median and over, but the other portion, I'd be just as happy if it was striped so that it's, this is a pedestrian zone.
Well, thank you. Anything else for the applicant? All right. Thanks for fielding all of our questions. Boy, you thought that was gonna be easy, and we...
Actually, I have a question.
Oh, just as he's walking away.
Before you run, I, I just.
Please come back, sir.
I made a note here and got it throlled in the sidewalk discussion. So, currently we have the, uh, based on the staff report, a, uh, condition of approval for the hours of operation between eight and six. Is that, is, are those the typical hours of all your stores?
Yes, though.
Okay.
I think that's.
I swore I'd been to discount tire stores that are.
Friday and late, uh, five, is that?
Okay. I was gonna say, I swear I've been to discount tire stores on the way to work before eight o'clock, so that's why I was wondering. Do they, do you have an, do they have an ability to drop off cars, and does that make a difference to us? Maybe that's not a question that.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I know they don't allow cars just, you know, overnight.
I swear I don't like their little.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, let's see. We are going to Mr. McCandless again.
Thank you. Um, again, this is for preliminary site plan approval and also conditional use permit approval for what we call vehicle and equipment repair limited in the planned community zones. Just back up a little bit. This is part of the Clay Hollow B subdivision, which you're all familiar with. Uh, the Ranch's Loop Road is just on the south side of, of the property with Seventy-Eight Hundred South on the north side. Um, the Del Taco site that we were talking about is just immediately to the, the west. The, one of the things that we brought up initially, and as I talked about in the, um, in the pre-meeting, was just the, uh, the concern for noise and compressors and, and in relation to the apartments to, to the south. And in response to that, the applicant went out and got an acoustical company to, to do an analysis of the site. Uh, that has been included in your packets. And also, as I mentioned, they did compare the site with, this site with, uh, a comparable site on Seventieth South, an existing site. Uh, I did check the, the code enforcement records. We don't have any, uh, any complaints that have been issued or given to the city on the, the site, uh, that's on Seventieth South. So, we really don't see that that's going to be a, an issue. The apartments there are in similar proximity, similar distance to what they are, um, at this location. Uh, and if you have any questions on that, you can ask the, the applicant to go into detail if you, if you choose. The, this is just the land use map, this, and as you'll notice that there is a mapping error here. That really should go along the street. So, it is, the whole thing is really in a, a neighborhood commercial district, or land use. Uh, the site is pretty straightforward. As I mentioned, they did redesign the site a couple of times, but there's a, a large landscaping strip. They'd originally shown park, uh, showed parking along this, this area to the north of the building. Um, that's just now a big landscaped, a landscaped area that will match the, uh, Del, Del Taco to the site to the, the west. The other thing is, is that the driveway is now aligned. Uh, there'll be parking here, and, um, let's see, all storage will be inside the building. There'll be some additional parking here on the south side. So, with that, um, all this, this, I'm sorry, this did go through the designer view committee. Uh, the only thing that they had recommended was adding some additional columns on the south side of the building, which they've done here and here. Um, and so with that, our recommendation is for approval, and that's subject to, uh, the recommendations of approval on page two of your report.
Great, thank you, Mr. McCandless. Any questions for staff this evening? Well, then, we'll open this up to public comments. If you'd like to speak on this item, please feel welcome to come forward at this time. We'll close the public comment section and discuss among the planning commission. Anything to say about Discount Tire? Commissioner Luthy?
I think if they're, I'm able to, the sidewalk discussion we had early on, that I think that it's a great fit for the area and meets what we're looking for along Seventy-Eight Hundred South, so I'd like to make a motion.
Please do, thank you.
Based on the findings set forth in this staff report, I move that the planning commission approved the preliminary site plan and conditional use permit for the Discount Tire located at fifty-five thirteen west, seventy-eight hundred south, in the P C planned community zone, with the conditions listed in section one of this report, or section I of this report, sorry.
Commissioner Sokoski?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Luthy and a.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sokoski. Any discussion to that motion? Commissioner Green?
Do we need to add a condition that we can, that we can talk about the sidewalk approved by the, uh, city staff that, that connects the property? I, the, the conditions don't say that, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't add something, uh.
Good, good point. Commissioner Sokoski? Oh, Commissioner Green, can you, were you done, Commissioner Green? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yes, I'm done with that.
Could you please turn your microphone off? Thank you. Commissioner Sokoski?
Thank you. Um, I think that would be covered under the site plan more than the conditional use permit.
Commissioner Luthy?
I'm happy to add that. We are going to see this again for final, aren't we? Or no, it goes to staff?
No.
Okay, then, yes, I agree. Let's add that. Let's amend the motion that, um, the, let me, let me find it again. Sorry, the, um.
There's two motions.
Yeah, that's what threw me off. The first one.
Two motions.
So, the land use one is the one that I've already done.
Right, so we were.
So.
So, we could put it under land use, or we could do it on the second motion, uh, at your probably site plan condition? Okay, so they've.
Yes, so they are tied together. Okay, so, let me, let me revise that to say that we approve the preliminary site plan with the conditions that the sidewalks be added to tie together the site with the adjacent sites, as well as the adjacent roadways, to make the site more walkable and pedestrian-friendly.
Thank you. And Commissioner Sokoski, do you accept that amendment?
I do, but I think that we might need to be a little bit more specific, um, mainly saying that, uh, with that condition, that the sidewalk needs to tie to the site to the east, um, and then cross the center.
That's the, where are we looking?
Uh, no, it's to the east. So, the property to the east, um, it needs to cross in the center of the median to the west, and it needs to tie to Ranch's Loop Road to the south. See the north arrow?
So, you want it to this undeveloped lot to the east, is what you're saying?
Right, just, just the concrete run to the boundary there.
Oh, right here. I understand what you're saying, okay.
Right. So, right there where the pointer is?
Yes.
And then in the center of the median, um, going towards Del Taco, just right there in the center of the median, and then, um, some extension of sidewalk that runs.
Whether it's from.
Through the landscape.
The west side.
Right down to Ranch's Loop Road.
Yes.
Somewhere in there.
Is that clear enough for staff?
Okay.
And Mr. Murray, we usually see this as two separate motions. Are we okay to lump these together as one motion, or would it be best to parcel them out?
Procedurally, you can combine them, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. So, back to Commissioner Luthy.
So, is that clear enough for your notes to say, I make that motion? Or do you want me to phrase it again? Okay, then that's the motion I make.
Are you sure you?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
[laughing]
For, for the other planning commissioners, are we, are we clear? Is there any question? Any discussion to that amended motion?
Based on.
What's the sidewalk?
Three different areas.
We're talking about connecting it to, with three different areas.
The medical office, Del Taco, and.
And Ranch's Loop.
The Ranch's Loop Road.
Yes.
Great.
Go team.
Go team. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you for being here. Please pass along our best regards to Mr. Fournier. Thank you. Have a good evening. And our last item this evening, number five, we have Michelle Place, fifty-four eleven west, nine thousand south, future land use map amendment for twenty-four point oh eight acres from public facilities to medium-density residential, and rezone twenty-four point oh eight acres from P F public facility zone to R one eight C, single-family residential, eight thousand square foot minimum lots zone. Michelle Investment, Sean Michelle is the applicant. Are you here to see me, sir? Mr. Michelle, please come forward. Good to see you again.
Nice to be seen. Thank you for, uh, being here. I love how you've been voting yes all night, so thank you. [laughing] Keep up the good work. Uh, as you know, we tabled this last time to reconsider a couple of options. Uh, my, my honest opinion is, our community really needs, uh, places for our children. We'll have over seven hundred of our children staying in our community in the next four or five years, and there's no place, there's no affordable housing. But after listening to your comments last time, it was pretty obvious that, uh, we weren't going to get any high-density or even an R one six zone, and that's why we tabled this. We looked at the R one ten, uh, which I understand just about every community now desires, and, uh, we came up with an alternative, a great transitional zone, that, that we feel is really similar to an R one ten because of the dimensions and the, the layout of the property. And I'd like to turn some time over to, uh, Troy Wolverton, our, uh, engineer, to kind of explain exactly what I'm talking about. So, Troy, if you'd come up?
Troy Wolverton, twenty-ten north, Redwood Road. Um, one of the things that, just to, to talk about this, we've been really told to look at the adjacent zoning next door. That's R one ten. That's really kind of what we'd like to see in this location. That's the direction we've received from staff, and the planning commission was very clear as well. In our challenge with this particular property, the Westridge Academy has a loop road, and that loop road involves, there's, there's a small portion right here that will have to be relocated in order to make this project work, and also some access, uh, modifications that will occur down here. The, the property is such that these lots are, in order to go from the eight thousand square foot, uh, areas to the ten thousand square foot, they, they are bound by this dimension across here. In order to make this extension down to this narrow section of property here, there, there needs to be a, a terminal street added, and that terminal street needs to have a secondary access or a loop associated with it to not exceed the length of terminal street. So, that being said, it becomes, it's not possible, if you will, with the layout of land that's been provided here to, to go with deeper lots to create that, uh, area that's needed. This, this lot on the corner is kind of an odd-shaped one. It is over ten thousand square feet. Uh, some of the lots over here that are deeper are also over ten thousand square feet. But on an average, we're, we're close in the area of about nine thousand to ninety-two hundred square feet as this layout is currently exists. There is some green space. There's a large drainage channel that's right here that is encumbered by an easement currently that does not allow construction to occur within it. The drainage is now cut off by the western improvements of the road here and does not have the large drainage capacity that it needed at one time. That said, there's still an easement here that precludes the ability to develop. The property line runs closer to the bottom of that channel, but because it's encumbered by that easement, the line shown here is actually the developable portion of the ground. So, there was a question about will there be some green space? Yes, there will be some green space here. Uh, how that will be, actually be absorbed into these lots becomes a, a question for the owners to work out as we move forward. We normally don't talk about this much detail at this level, but I did want to point out that, um, the homes that are over here, there are some two-story homes that will fit on these lots and can easily be built so that we've, we've got a matching square footage. In these lots in this location, again, here, if we were to go to the, the R one ten zoning, they would become wider because they cannot become deeper and maintain the same road layout that's required here to make this development work. And that being said, it is a difference of about six hundred square feet in the home. So, if, again, we try to say, well, these R one ten lots fit over here as the current layout, yes, they will with the exception of that. Now, to put it in terms of what, if I'm driving through the project, what's that going to look like? How is it going to feel? Well, we're talking about fifteen to twenty-five feet difference in lot frontage, which really equates to a third-car garage, if we want to put it in that term. So, as you're driving through, excuse me, I didn't mean to do that, as you're driving through, uh, the development over here, if you were to say, what's the difference between these two? The architecture's going to be different. Styles of homes are different now, and you're familiar with those layouts. Uh, what you're going to see is possibly, maybe these cars, instead of having the RV parking that you see nearly every one of these homes has, as well as the third-car garage, maybe they don't have the RV parking. Maybe they have a narrower garage. So, that difference, again, if we look at garages being twelve, or two-car garages being in the twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight foot range, we're talking about three-car garages being in the thirty-four, thirty-six, thirty-eight foot range. So, that real difference is, is, can be taken up in the garage. Can the square footages be the same? Yes. And it, what's the true difference between the R one ten and the R one eight that's proposed here is about, again, the six hundred square feet in the lot, area in the home. Lastly, I want to point out, we've had the concern raised several times that, that folks bring in conceptual lot layouts like these and get the desired zoning that they desire, and then they come in with a higher-density plan. The yield on this particular property due to the geometric, uh, things that I've tried to briefly describe, does not afford an additional yield for this particular property. The, uh, again, the R one ten, uh, has the, uh, impact on these lot frontages. It would increase the lot widths by about fifteen to twenty-five feet. That's, again, the difference, and, and, again, that's six hundred square feet in the home. So, as you're driving through the neighborhood when it's constructed, what are you going to see that's different between the two zones? It'll be those two items, basically. The frontage width of an R one eight lot is seventy-five feet. The frontage width for an R one ten lot is eighty-five feet. That's the minimum frontage. In order for that to provide the yield, ten thousand square feet, the depth of the lot has to be a hundred and seventeen feet. We don't have those depths in here because of the narrow pieces of this property, and, again, that's why we're asking for the R one eight zone consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Uh, again, you know, uh, we're talking about minimum. Requirements as far as building the homes, six hundred square feet may not sound like a lot, but if you add that to the top of the, uh, bill, that's about sixty thousand dollars to every home. Uh, we know at an R one eight, it's not going to be affordable housing. It's not going to be low-income housing. It's not possible, but it does make it more affordable for younger families to be in an area when you take sixty thousand dollars off the purchase price. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Michelle? Great. Well, saved some time for you if anything comes up during the public hearing. Thank you very much. And Mr. McCandless, you're doing such a great job, we might as well go back to you again.
Thank you. Um, this, uh, we did bring this to you, uh, earlier, and so I don't think I'll go through it in, in detail, other than the, uh, you know, again, the request was changed from R one six zoning. Now, is, is what is, is being proposed is R one eight, eight zoning, which is, um, you know, eight thousand square foot lot minimums. Our, we'd gone through, uh, our staff report and just listed the, the reasons why we thought that ten thousand square foot lots would, would work better, just in context of, and that's, that's, uh, because of, in, in context of the adjoining, um, lot sizes, particularly to the east and then also to the north. Uh, so really what you're, you're looking at is whether or not you feel like a, a transition here is appropriate in this location, or whether you think it needs to be consistent, uh, with the lot sizes that are on the adjoining properties.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McCandless? Commissioner Green?
The pioneer project that we approved with the council, with all the other stuff on the west side of fifty-six hundred west, that was on the other side of fifty-six hundred west, wasn't it? Or was that the U one eleven?
That was on the other side, U one eleven.
Oh, never mind, okay. What's on the other side of fifty-six hundred west from here? I'm, I.
Open space.
It's just, it's just open space right there?
Uh, the corridor is just on the other side.
Well, there's open space there.
Terraflex is there.
Okay.
And there's some light that's.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get a bigger, so the house is to the north across and.
Count down to goodness.
Thank you, windows. Uh, the house is across the street on Ninety South over there in Mayflower, Mountain Vista. What, what's that zoning there?
That's actually as part of a planned community zone, so the house sizes are, um.
Okay.
They're going to be a little bit smaller, but, again, there's going to be open space that's going to be required as part of that.
Yeah.
But, um, I get, I mean, I was looking at some of the lots in there. But, I mean, I was looking at some of the lots, and they're probably in the 8,000, 8, 10,000 square foot range.
Any other question? All right. This is noticed as a public hearing as well, so we'd like to open that portion at this time, and we do have some citizens who have filled out some cards wanting to speak, so we'll give them deference to come up in priority. First of all, Mr. David Green, please come forward, sir. You have up to three minutes to state your opinions.
Yes, I spoke also at the last meeting, and based on what Commissioner Sokowski had to say, I realized that we can't hold on to our mountain view. However, I think there's some other things you need to be aware of. In July of 2008, a number of homes in our neighborhood along West Terry Way were flooded because of water coming off of that higher property. And Westridge was required to dig out some fairly large catch basins. And those catch basins are basically what has saved us from further flooding issues because, again, that property is much higher, and part of the reason it's much higher is the developed, well, the owner of the land originally, before it was developed, sold off the first, the top four or five feet to our friends at Tomsek and Son to sell his topsoil. And so we got to buy that back when we were doing our landscaping. It works out, you know, a little bit of economy help. But the other, and so our concern is that this has to be a consideration because there are higher, we're concerned about water runoff, and the parking lots there at Westridge will still be there. The girls, where it says unknown, that's the girls' campus, and that parking lot literally is at eye level at the top of our fence, and water runs off of that pretty significantly in the rain. Luckily, there's a, there is a ditch there and those catch basins to catch that now. But in 2008, the debris from our bark in our landscaping literally came a quarter inch away from our window wells. And if it hadn't been for the drainage system we had put in, we would have had our basement flooded, just like our neighbors on both sides. And I guess the final thing that concerns me is that entrance onto 90th South, just from the standpoint of the traffic on 90th South, you've got the apartments, you've got that other neighborhood, and they're all right there. And if you've never been on 90th South in the morning, as the school kids are trying to cross two or three different places down there, it's not easy getting in and out, at least at the, you know, the morning and the afternoon commute times. A little bit of a concern there, and certainly the other outlet is easier, safer, but, again, you're going into an industrial area, so those are all my thoughts.
Great, thank you, Mr. Green. We'll definitely speak to water and traffic this evening. Next, we have John. We don't have a last name. Historical Arts and Casting? Or Mr. Edward Frotten? Please feel free to come forward.
Thank you very much. If you don't mind, if I could indulge the committee, I'm representing two separate entities, myself and Historical Arts. And apparently, none of the principals could be here, and they didn't know if they could show up, so they gave me their, a letter, and with each of us, we're submitting a letter for the record, along with a couple of visuals, just some brochures, so you can see how this impacts the area just west of this proposal. So if it's okay, I'll read my letter first.
Please do, and you have five minutes instead of three because you're representing a group, so feel free to take your time.
Well, actually, I'm representing two separate. If I can't read fast, you're patient, please. Anyway, this is addressed to, my name is Edward J. Frotten. This is addressed to West Jordan Planning Commission, September 5, 2017, to whom it may concern regarding the Mitchell Place proposed development at 5511 West, 9,000 South. Greetings. The purpose of this letter is to address the proposed general plan, land use map amendment for 24.0 acres from PF Public Facilities to medium-density R-18C single-family residential. Having served on several planning commissions and studying West Jordan's master plan and zoning ordinances, I am encouraged. Many of the opportunities and challenges associated with land use development are evident in West Jordan's mission statement. Quote, "The planning and zoning division plans for growth and development within West Jordan, which ensures neighborhood livability and commercial viability," or vitality, excuse me. And then it goes on, "Utilizing smart growth and sustainable development principles." End quote. Our property borders, our property borders this proposed development, and our current use would be most adversely affected by this proposed change. Therefore, my family and I agree with the planning development staff recommendations to deny based on the various points outlined. Further, we wish to add, number one, in the year 2000, my family and I joined forces with Historical Arts and Castings to build a sculpture studio adjacent to the Westridge Academy, formerly Utah Boys Ranch. Before making a sizable investment in land and buildings, we had all been assured by the city that an adequate buffer zone would forever be maintained between industrial and other mixed-use development. Despite this promise, developments have slowly been allowed to encroach, to the point that we need to tell you, this new zoning change proposal entirely unacceptable. Number two, Historical Arts and Castings, the finest architectural fabrication and casting facility in North America, just finished restoring the U.S. Capitol Dome in Washington, D.C. For my part, I recently installed a heroic five-block-long Pioneer Courage Monument in Omaha, Nebraska. This work completed at these two facilities should give us some credibility in now saying, now to impose a high-density, narrow strip of residential development into this existing environment seriously invites residential-industrial incompatibility issues on a grand scale. Number three, potential short-term gains seem entirely at odds with the community's best long-range interests. Number four, the existing natural geographic drainage barrier to the north and west forms a perfect buffer between any proposed residential and the pre-existing light industrial developments to the west. Number five, residential developments east and north of the existing Westridge Academy campus should conform entirely to adjoining zoning regulations and maximum allowable densities. Six, the ideal residential-industrial public use boundary regarding these properties would be at the narrowest point where the Academy property connects to the north drainage escarpment. Number seven, valuable open space and important aesthetic community feature will unnecessarily be lost. I hope this is helpful. Signed, Edward J. Frotten. And then Historical Arts letter. Regarding Mitchell Place, and I won't read the address, dear planning commission, we are writing this letter to voice our opposition to the proposed rezoning of 24.08 acres from public facilities to medium-density residential. As we mentioned in the meeting on August 1, 2017, we believe there needs to be a clear line of demarcation between the industrial park and residential developments. When we purchased our property and built our facilities in 1993, by the way, I think they were one of the very first developments in the Bagley Park area, we were assured that an adequate barrier would be maintained. Historically, there was a natural land barrier created by the drainage ditch to the north. We believe that line could be maintained and don't see any necessity of a road from a proposed residential area into a business.
If we can please, please feel free to keep going. You were speaking on your own behalf and now representing a group, so thank you. The microphone automatically turns off if we can reset it. Six minutes. Are we okay to extend? Commissioner Sokowski?
Move to dispense with the rules so that we can continue to hear.
Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
I'll second that.
Great. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. Please feel free to continue, Mr. Frotten. Thank you.
Very generous. Thank you. A few points to consider would be, number one, safety, general public as well as our employees. For example, since the construction of the low-income, high-density, doesn't, excuse me, high-density apartments to the north, we have seen evidence of trespassing and kids using our loading docks as skateboard ramps. Private industrial facilities are not public parks. Number two, vandalism and theft. As residential areas collide with industrial and manufacturing, there has been a noticeable increase in these crimes on our property. And I know that's been true. People know what a foundry is, and it attracts a lot of potential bandits. Number three, potential noise pollution. Parentheses, generators, vibratory mills, compressors, forklifts, et cetera. Note, there is a sandblasting plant right across from the proposed street that would exit the development to the south. Number four, work schedules, potential 24-hour shifts, potential light pollution. Number five, had we known of the sale of the property, we would have considered purchasing the property directly east of us to avoid the direct access between residential and industrial. I don't believe there's another street in the entire industrial park that would inexplicably link residential and industrial in such a manner. And I think dumping a lot of traffic onto Bagley Park Road to access residential would not be a wise idea. Number six, there seems to be plenty of other space available for medium and high-density residential in West Jordan. We believe it would be in the city's best interest to create, ensure, and maintain a clear delineation between industrial manufacturing and single-family residential. It is our belief that in the long term, planning and development of our great city, there should be some consideration given to keeping a legitimate boundary and barrier between such differing land uses, which, in my mind, is the purpose of planning commissions. Thank you for your time and consideration regarding our concerns. Best regards, Chad Thorold, CFO, Historical Arts and Castings. And if you would like, with your permission, perhaps I could just turn this information over to the executive assistant.
If you have a hard copy, that'd be great. Thank you.
Anything more?
We will, we'll address any questions that have been brought up.
We'd be happy to. If anyone would like to contact us, including the planning board, the staff, as well as the commission members, we'd be most happy to visit with you or have you come out and visit our facility and see firsthand what, you know, what the situation looks like and what our concerns are. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Frotten. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Please come forward, sir. State your name and address for the public record, please.
I'm Corbin England, 9096 South West Terry Way is my address. I would be, this is my backyard. I spoke last time. We'll try not to repeat things that have been said today. I adamantly oppose this. I'm in favor of R-110, public safety, the increased traffic on 90th South. You're going to have everybody dumped out on the 90th for the majority coming in and out of this neighborhood, as was spoke about already. When kids are walking to and from school to Copper Canyon there, it's pretty scary. There is a light at the Wild Acres and 90th South intersection, and there are constantly car accidents there. And I believe there was one fatal. Somebody's died there. The increased demand on the infrastructure, my water pressure, from the time where I moved in to now has dropped considerably. Snowplows are usually a day after the snowstorm. We just had a home sell in our neighborhood, adjoining this property, similar to mine. It just sold for $419,000. So we're talking, you know, 600 square foot difference between these homes. Our homes where I live and the, the new area here, 600 square foot, do the math, property values decreased considerably. Where's the open space? I was here at the last meeting, and this council and this commission suggested coming back to the drawing board with some green space, something to beautify this. The only green space, open space I see is somewhere that they can't build already because of an easement. I don't see anything in here other than cramming 80 homes in a space that's really odd. It was touched on already. We're trying to shoehorn this in to an area where we have high-density apartments, we have industrial. And to talk about the noise pollution there, these homeowners aren't going to be happy. It's loud. You can't even, you know, sleep out on your trampoline with your kids at night. And that's not due to the casting, folks, but it's a noisy area, and that's 24 hours a day, seven days a week, not to mention the dan and smell that comes through there. Where's the due diligence on the developers? They talk about in their plan knocking on the doors of all the adjoining businesses, but what's absent is there is knocking on the doors of the neighbors. And the reason, and my belief that they didn't do that is they wouldn't have liked what they heard. And these will not be affordable homes, whether we talk R-18 or R-110. The market goes gangbusters on these homes. They'll sell these homes out quickly, whether it's R-18 or R-110. And that's it. The market's hot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Would anyone else like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section, and let's go to Mr. Nelson, please, to address the questions that Mr. Green mentioned with flooding and traffic. I know we have a traffic engineer, but in his absence, if you could discuss a little bit of flooding and traffic in that area.
As far as the flooding goes, I would defer most of that to our capital facilities group, Mr. Dave Murphy. I don't know exactly what flooding was referred to. I do know that in a proposed development like this, they would be required to detain all of their storm water and release it at a controlled rate, so they would have to construct a detention pond to catch that water and release it at a controlled rate that would, I believe it would go into the system that goes into the Wildflower Detention Pond, which is just to the east. It's a pond that the city constructed and increased several years ago. Again, I would, I would have to talk to the, to the person who made the comment and find out more what he's referring to and get the right staff information.
Thank you. Commissioner Sokowski?
Oh, he can.
Oh, yes, we've got traffic, too. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Okay. As far as the traffic goes, our traffic engineer would most likely require a traffic impact study to be performed on a site this size. It would look at the impacts to the existing system and would also look at access onto and from 90th South. You'll notice that there's a lot of subdivisions that dump onto 90th South and all of our collector roads throughout the city and arterial roads, so I wouldn't say it's, you know, that access to the subdivision is particularly limiting, but it would have to be studied and designed in a way that, to make it as safe as possible, and our traffic engineer would head that up.
Great. Thank you for that feedback. I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Green and other citizens knew that as this progresses, there definitely would be studies for water, for traffic, and that that would need to be addressed and favorable results to move forward or, or other conditions applied to it. Great, thank you. Commissioner Sokowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize ahead of time. I have a lot to say on this. I, after our last meeting in August, I went down to the historical foundry and walked through it to get a better idea of what they do there and the type and style of business and...
and whether or not, knowing that this would be coming back, it would be compatible with this type of development. And I have to say that I lean towards the historical foundry. The foundry brings in business from all over the country and they do really fantastic work there. But it is a very industrial, very industrial operation. Pouring hot metal and there's shakers and machines that make lots of noise and there's fumes that come off and, you know, it's as industrial as you can probably possibly get. There's machines that run 24 hours a day in that building that they will leave on that score and cut the dyes that they use as castings. And I really don't see that residential housing close to this is a good thing. Well, we have the apartments to the north of it. There's an investment on the part of those that own the apartments, but the people that live there typically in apartment complexes are fairly transient. They come and go. And if they don't like the situation or the noise or what have you, they can get out of their lease with a fairly insignificant financial obligation. Whereas when you start bringing homeowners that have put a lot of money forward towards their investment, complaints can be a lot more, I guess, aggressive. And I just don't see it as a good mix. The Bagley Park Road area there pours out into strictly industrial. It's from the foundry over, you have Terra Flex, which is a Jeep manufacturing area where they make Jeep parts. They make lifts. They have service bays where they have Jeeps being worked on. Just down the road from that, you have a facility that makes, I guess, temporary-style tent structures, the large-style tents. It's just really a very industrial area. And where you have the high density with the apartments, I feel like there's some consideration there because that's almost more of a business than it is residential.
And may I interrupt for just a moment, please? Just a point of clarification, since you've spoken to traffic and the historical arts that have been brought up from the public comments since we were addressing some questions to staff. The other things that you wanted to say, would this be more for after the applicant gets an opportunity to come back up?
Yes.
Or I just wanted to make sure we didn't jump the gun and wheel out.
Just one other thing.
Great. Thank you.
The other thing is that I did notice that there is a fairly significant elevation change. And it's not been exaggerated. The elevation is very high just to the Northwest Ridge Academy there. And in order to make it work with drainage and stuff, I don't see how this plan would work. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. And then we can certainly come back to you. Let's see. Let's go to Mr. Michel. Would you like to come back up, you and your representative as well? And we just want to make sure that we give you deference and time to be able to address anything that was raised in the public comment section.
Thank you. Like Mr. Sikowski said, this is probably the highest and best use is be apartments in here and we're all for apartments. And in reference that we're here today on an R-18 zone, I do want to say there is a line of demarcation. There's only one lot that even abruptly touches the foundry. So, I mean, we're fairly removed from that area. I would like Troy Wolverton to address some of the other issues that some of the people have had regarding the potential water retention.
Just to point out, and has already been mentioned, we'll go through some significant studies. The drainage for this area runs to the south and comes along here. There's a couple detention basins or retention basins. They're actually detention basins, I want to be clear. They were referenced by the first gentleman, David Green, who spoke. Those discharged down to a regional facility that's down here, a park area, where there's a large detention basin as well. So, the drainage is pretty well set out. We need to obviously honor that as we go through the grading portions here. We would like to reduce this as much as we could as far as height between the neighbors. That was mentioned. The traffic access portion up here, this will be a UDOT request for 90th South as this is a state route, as well as working with Bill Baranowski, the city traffic engineer. And we have already commenced the process of going through the traffic analysis for this and have several reviews yet to undergo. And those, of course, come later in the process. The foundry issues, I think, you know, it pretty much is what it is. And where that demarcation is, of course, needs to be determined at some point. The application before you is for the request of an R-18. The staff is recommending an R-110, which says that the staff is pretty much in favor of a residential use there. As far as the other applicant, they were in favor of the R-110. Recognize there is, you know, a public work issue associated with water pressure, snowplowing, those kind of things. And I think the city does the best they can with what they have to accomplish those services. And I believe that covers the bulk, flooding and traffic were the other two issues that have been addressed.
Great. Thank you. And then let's go back to Mr. Nelson. When you were talking about a detention pond, were you talking in that parcel that they're wanting to develop? Or when Mr. Wolverton's talking about an adjacent property down farther, would that suffice?
I'm not sure exactly what Mr. Wolverton has in mind. What our requirement is that when a piece of property is developed, that there's a maximum amount of water that can leave the site. And generally, when you create new hardscapes, roads, rooftops, driveways, those sort of things, it increases the amount of water that leaves the site because it's not able to seep into the ground. So, generally, it's addressed through a detention pond. One thing I'll point out is that we're looking at a general plan amendment and a rezone. So, we look at this as a suggestion of the lot layouts that might come in. But when action is taken, they're able to get a certain density or lot size and they still have to meet all of the city's requirements. So, if they lose a lot or they lose several lots in order to meet our requirements, then that's how it has to be.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to say, Mr. Michel or Wolverton? Because we're grateful for your desire to contribute to West Jordan. Each application, obviously, just needs to stand on its own merit without favoritism or prejudice.
No, I think we've said what we've said and we thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Well, let's bring it back to the commission for discussion. One thing that I would bring up, as was just mentioned by Mr. Wolverton, it's interesting that, you know, this has come before us before. Staff is recommending denial on both applications, yet we're seeing it. Does anybody want to speak to that situation? Commissioner Green?
I'm going to go back to staff on a question, something that the applicant said about lot sizes being 75 feet wide versus 85 feet wide, 117 feet deep. What are our requirements for an R-110 as far as height, breadth, width, depth, whatever we want to call that? Are there some requirements in the code for that? I didn't get a chance to hit the city code here.
Yes, there are on all of those. There's a lot frontage requirement, a lot width requirement. There is, and then what that does, and then there's a lot area requirement and then there's a building height requirement. So, there are several. I think Larry's looking up the...
While he's looking that up, we'll go.
Can we go to...
Got it.
If you have that. And then let's defer back to Commissioner Sikowski since we interrupted your comments. Thank you. So, please, Mr. Gardner?
So, what did you want to know, Commissioner Green? R-18, 75 feet is the applicant said and R-110's 85 feet. Of course, the area is 8,000 square feet for an R-18 and then 10,000 for a R-110. So, however they arrive at that, you know, then another thing is the corner lots have to be 1,000 square feet larger on all of these. And so, anything that's a corner, if it was an R-18, would have to be a minimum of 9,000 square feet.
So, the only requirement is width?
Yes.
Yeah.
No. Yeah. So, all we have is a frontage. And then however they arrive at the eight or the 9,000 square feet is... And so, you know, with an R-18, that's a minimum. And so, I like this. Many of the lots are going to fall, they're going to be way above that because the cul-de-sacs and corners and that type of thing.
Great. Thank you. Let's please go to Commissioner Sikowski since he had some other items he wanted to address. And then Commissioner Hanson after that, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to address something that was said by the applicant had mentioned that the staff is in favor of residential here based on the fact that they're asking for an R-110. And I don't know that that's entirely true because we're being presented with an R-18 and we're being recommended denial by the staff. So, on top of that, I feel that it's the planning commission's duty to make sure that the highest and best use is met. And I don't feel that a residential site in here, which frankly looks squished in, is the highest and best use for West Jordan. I feel like last time, when you guys came, we asked for open space and what we received was a ditch that couldn't be built upon as the green space provided. I feel like we asked for R-110 and we're being approached with R-18. I don't feel like it's a good fit. It looks like this has been designed to accommodate the maximum amount of lots, which I understand from a development perspective, it has to pencil out. I get it. But it looks like it's just been jammed in as tight as it can possibly go. And I do appreciate that there was work done to make it so that the frontage of the homes looked like they were more of an R-110-style community. However, it just feels like it's a squished-in infill piece with no amenities. And I don't feel that that's the highest and best use, especially where it borders an industrial zone. I wouldn't want to live next to an industrial zone. And I'm not saying that other people might not, but it just doesn't seem to me that this is the highest and best use. We're bordering the Utah Boys Ranch, which is a fine facility. They do great work, but I wouldn't want to live next to the Utah Boys Ranch. I wouldn't want to live next to apartments. It just doesn't feel to me like this is a good fit for our community.
Thank you. Can we please go to Commissioner Hanson and then Commissioner Luthy?
Thank you, Chairman. The one thing that bothers me is the fact that there is, as Commissioner Sikowski mentioned, there is no green space. There is, we were putting in all of these homes with absolutely no place for children to play. And I wanted to ask, David, is it you that is handling this or Ray? What is the side yard requirements in the eight?
It's eight in both.
Eight on each side?
It's eight in both the R-18 and R-110 zone.
And the 10 also? I just feel, as has been repeated before, that we're squeezing in a lot of houses. I am familiar with Mr. Fratton's work. I have seen what he did in Omaha. And I think that it can be loud. It can be busy. And you only have two accesses, one into Bagley Park, which is also commercial, industrial, all along Bagley Park. So, I just don't think that this is the highest and best use for this piece of property in an R-18 zone. Thank you.
Commissioner Luthy? Oh, sorry.
Can I say one thing? This is a general land use map amendment, a zone change. They really counsel the planning commission not get so focused on this design because this isn't going to be the ultimate design. Now, there will be, you know, some open space, maybe there could be an open space buffer between the industrial. But that's more of a subdivision than it is a zone change requirement. Now, if you're concerned as having any residential in this area, then you forward a negative recommendation.
Could you please perhaps say that again? Because I know that this doesn't necessarily need to be the exact schematic.
No. And I feel like we're getting caught in some weeds here now because we're starting to broach into subdivision design and where you're basing your decision to, what I'm feeling to, forward a negative recommendation on the design of a concept plan, which is concerning to me. Now, if as a planning commission you don't feel like residential is a good fit in this area, then I believe that's good enough to forward a negative... But you don't need to go through the minutia of everything you find wrong with this plan because I'm sure the applicant and his designer can find a lot of things wrong with it too. And so, that's what I'm saying, is that we need to keep this a little bit higher level and then the city council will be the ultimate determination whether it works or not.
Which is a little bit nebulous because I know we talk about this often, that, you know, unusable green space is more a buffer or a setback. You know, can you kick a ball? Is there a community space or gathering? So, maybe it's a matter of semantics, open space, are there amenities? So, because we're looking at this being a, you know, future land use map amendment and rezone, don't we still have to... So, where's that balance of looking at what is brought before us for R-18 versus R-110 than it was R-16?
In a Euclidean zone, first of all, there's no requirements for open space, period. There's just not a requirement of the ordinance. And so, I think that whenever you forward something to the city council, you go with that understanding that any open spaces is going to be at the graces of the developer. Now, in different PC zones and PIDE, there's a 15% minimum requirement. So, in this site, you'd be looking at three to four acres of open space. However, those often comes with a higher density designations. And so, the Euclidean zone is, you really get what you know you're going to get density-wise. You know, nothing's ever going to be smaller than 8,000 or 10,000, whereas a residential, a planned residential development like across the street, you might have some lots that are six and some that are 10, but it all works into density. And so, there is no open space requirement in any of our Euclidean zones whatsoever. And so, you always follow those without any presumption that you're going to get any, period.
Thank you for that clarification. I think myself, I don't know if anyone else, was under the impression that that requirement remain the same in this type of zone. So, let's make sure that we keep our deliberation and findings of fact to reflect that, so that we're not showing prejudice for what we consider might not be adequate open space. Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Luthy?
Yes, thank you. I had a couple more technical questions on this and I realized that we're not looking at the neighborhood and that we are looking at the zone. But is there going to be two accesses required? One of the big contentions that's come up over and over again as we've talked about this is taking an access to Bagley. Is it required? So, if they're going to put a neighborhood in, we have to put that road in no matter what, is what we're hearing. Okay. So, it doesn't matter what zone it is. It doesn't matter if there's going to be a neighborhood in there, that second road will go in.
The fire code allows...
The fire code allows up to 30 lots on a single access. So they could put 30 lots on there and do a single access, but any, once we hit the 31, then we have to have a second access wherever it may be.
So looking at that, I just did a quick count, and I can't promise I did it correctly, but looking at that, it looks like that that would cut off just that very northern portion right at the road. All of that could go up, and that could be residential with the back portion be zoned to something else and have one access.
Well, it depends on what you're putting on the backside. That may still have to happen.
Sure, but that could be possibly if that was something that went more along with the lines of the other portion, it could come out, that separate access.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. My second question is, there was a lot of talk about buffering between the industrial and this community. There was talks about an assumed buffer, what was an acceptable buffer. Is there anything in the code as far as, I mean, I'm sure there is, what the acceptable buffer is between this industrial area and the residential area?
You know, the hard part is when you have residential and a commercial or industrial use moves in next to it, we require 20 feet of landscaping and a masonry wall. Now, I'm sure you could impose some kind of buffer during the subdivision process similar to that. We did the same thing, cottages at Apple Cross, if you remember, over by Cow Ranch. We still required them to put a 20-foot landscape buffer and a wall to protect the residents. So I don't, so we have done that.
This appears to me that this is much, much more already than 20 feet. This is quite a significant buffer. That's why I was asking. To me, this looks like a large buffer between the road and the industrial already.
The largest buffer, to answer your question simply, the largest buffer we have is 20 feet.
Okay, and this is much more than that, so... Okay, that was my question. Thanks.
Commissioner Green.
I have some difficulties here. One of them is the proximity of a bunch of houses to the industrial area. I have to tell you, when I sit here and I listen to, when we sit here before and we listen to people who bought houses next to airport number two, and then they come in a few years later and complain that the Army National Guard helicopters are too loud and they want the airport to move, that bothers me. This business was here first, and what we're going to hear is public nuisance-type stuff eventually, and people are going to come in and they're going to, you know, if there's a smell, if there's something, we don't need neighbors fighting neighbors in West Jordan City over public or private nuisances. I have to tell you, I think we messed up on the corner. I don't think Sunset Ridge Apartments should have ever been there, and we have a problem. Going back to what Mr. Gardner said about the going to the higher level, take the SR-71 up to the atmospheric level, I still can't see any compelling need to rezone this yet. I think that the burden of proof, and we've talked about this before, belongs to the developer to show us that this type of development is necessary, and I can't find that yet. Is there... You know, the last time that you were here, I talked about I didn't have a problem with some R-18, but it's all R-18. Didn't want R-16. And I look at this, and I look at the elevation differences, and honestly, I just don't see how this is compatible, how you put houses on top, you know, with land differences without trying to take the neighbors into consideration, and I don't see this, you know, as a residential area. I'm still having a hard time conceptualizing this, whether this is R-18 or R-16 or R-110. When we talk about the topography and the surrounding uses, I'm just not convinced that I have any sort of preponderance of the evidence to say that we ought to rezone this at this present time. And so that's where I'm at at this point in time with this particular... And as we look at, you go back and look at the notes on our last finding, I know, I noticed that, just looking at these, a couple, I'm going to, I'm trying to scroll there really quick. I know Commissioner Sikowski, we talked about finding C, finding D, criteria 1, criteria 2, criteria 3. I don't see any of these being met yet, finding E. So I'm not sold on this one yet.
Commissioner Sikowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree completely.
Commissioner? Commissioner Green? Try it again.
Hello? There we go. All right. Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Green. One of the findings is that, you know, is there anywhere else in the city that could support this kind of environment better, this kind of development? And the answer is yes.
There's quite apparently...
There we go. It doesn't want to hear from me anymore. There's a lot of land out west that would support this type of development better, I feel. And I feel like this is a shoehorned idea, not the development itself, just the fact that we're trying to squeeze residential into this area. And I feel like there's many places in the city that are well, way more suited for this type of development. That's all.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Green?
I am going to move that based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report on the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a negative recommendation to the city council to amend the future land use map from public facilities to medium-density residential on property located at 5411 West 90th South.
Do you have any findings you want to add to that? What?
I would...
So he's just agreeing with Ray's findings?
Beyond the fact that I don't, I have not found, that we haven't found that there's any, any reason to amend the future land use, that there's been no, nothing to compel a change in the future land use map.
Commissioner Quinney?
I would second that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Green and a second from Commissioner Quinney. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero.
While I have my microphone on, I'm going to make the second motion based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a negative recommendation to the city council to rezone 24.08 acres from public facility zone to R-18C, single-family residential, 8,000-square-foot minimum-lot zone.
Commissioner Quinney?
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Green and a second from Commissioner Quinney. Is there any discussion to this motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion also carries unanimously seven to zero, which brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening. Is there any other information from staff that you'd like to make us aware of, anything upcoming? Mr. Gardner?
Well, thank you all of you for attending the work session last Tuesday. It was, I thought it was a really good meeting. We've taken notes, and hopefully you'll see some of those items you want to see discussed shortly here.
Thank you. And I want to, we want to thank staff for all of their hard work on behalf of the city. Thank you for all you do. Commissioner Green?
Last Tuesday, I think we talked about maybe putting a committee together to look at the PC zone. At this point in time, I think I'm going to suggest that we wait until after November because almost all the city council and mayor and everybody are campaigning, and I know a couple of people wanted to be on there. So I think we probably ought to wait, and then sometime after November, try to set up a committee with the right people and try to tackle that, maybe early winter, if everybody's agreeable to that.
Something like a three-member commission, three-member council type idea? Thoughts? Commissioner Sikowski?
I agree, just because we may have different faces, and it would give those that are new an opportunity, if there's new folks.
To work with us as well and have some interaction. Great. Commissioner Luthy?
As the newbie, is it something that every December is when everybody's time runs up as it's segmented through? So do we want to wait till the first of the year so that... Yeah?
Good point, two-year cycle.
Right, so in case they get kicked off?
No, good point. No, it's not only for the newly elected members of the city council, but also for new planning commissioners. Whose terms are up at the end of this year? It would be Commissioners Quinney and Sikowski. Okay? And that would be your first term, right? So you're eligible for renewal if you would choose to do that. Great. Anything else to discuss this evening? Well, it's a pleasure working with you. A reminder, our next meeting would be the 19th of September. Commissioner Luthy?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion otherwise? All right, we stand adjourned.
Can we filibuster?
No filibuster. We'll leave that for, we'll leave that for Congress.